Let's say thirty, call the meeting in order with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Have an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there any citizens? And I will move on. Approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections? No additions or corrections. Approved as read. Consent agenda items. Approval of minutes, approval of travel education request, approval of personal action notices, approval of the human service report. I have a motion.
Move approval.
Have a motion, a second.
There are a number of personnel action notices that I set out in front of you as well this morning additions to that. So, like a large stapled group that...
I guess, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same time? Motion carried. Routine business. Approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion, honey?
Larry, also in front of you was, it's not really part of the claims because it was already approved through the resolution to purchase the properties next door, but we did make the initial down payment of, for those properties next door, and that, that register is in front of you too, just to let you know that that payment has been made.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Letter B. Department head reports. I guess we got county development department.
Morning.
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 Mr. Hill is on vacation this week for a few days. We'll be back on Thursday. Just noted in here that we need the chairman's signature on the SLA agreement, and that's received in your packet, and that should be self-explanatory. Through there, we have our zoning meeting tonight. Fairly light agenda for a change here, so hopefully we should be done by fairly early this evening. And we're making progress on the admin section. As of right now, we're tentatively set for our next public hearing, and that would be August seventeenth, I believe. So, that's all that I have.
And that public hearing is on the admin section?
Correct, in the admin section of the ordinance. We had one on the fifteenth of June, then it got referred back to committee for some possible updates. The committee met, and now it's, will be August seventeenth, I believe. The third Thursday in August, so...
Other questions? Thanks, Rich. Mike, would you like to, or, one go later? Okay.
Morning.
Morning, Jake.
Chris is out of the office today, but he wanted me to mention that we'll be heading out tomorrow after work for peer for our OH hearing Thursday at ten o'clock. It's scheduled for. We should be back by the end of the workday on Thursday. And that we're roughly halfway done with this summer's workload of the rural review. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Good morning. In your packet, there was a travel request for Kristen. She went last Friday to peer to listen to a presentation from B Pro on poll books, and she said that was a very good presentation, so that is one of our options. We also had E S and S come to Brookings a week and a half ago, and there were a number of counties that came that had E poll books also, and they gave a demonstration, so we're kind of trying to narrow down what would be the best. And once we get everything together, we will come and present it to the board and let you know what we've been, you know, finding and everything, but they've been good presentations so far, so... And looking for some direction for the surplus online auction. We had one this year from the end of February till the first of March. It went good, no problems there, but we, Jenna's been getting a lot of items in that people want a surplus, and I, we just need direction in our office, how you want to proceed. Do you want to have more than one a year, one a year, or if there's so many items, do you want to go ahead and have an auction? The two for this year, we have a number of vehicles that they have on, on the list. If I can find my list here. There's a two thousand and five Dodge Durango, a two thousand and ten Chevy Impala, two thousand and eight Dodge Charger, a nineteen ninety-four F-150, and then there's a number of things from the highway department. A falls plow wing, Monroe eight-foot rear mount wing, and kind of list goes on and on. There's probably about thirty-five to forty items from the highway department. So, just needing direction, what you would like us to do on that.
They're all, they're all larger items then?
They are, and that's, you know, like if they were all smaller items, I guess I would tend to say, let's wait till next year and just make it a yearly thing, but these are bigger items. And one thing with the vehicles, when they are left, you know, for a number of months, we end up having to replace batteries and that type of thing, so...
Well, the cost is fairly minimal to do the online auction, isn't it?
It is. I mean, it doesn't cost us anything. It's just the advertising, which if it's smaller items, it does count up, but Jenna's probably more in tune with it, but we have to publish twice. Is that correct, Jenna?
That is correct, but it doesn't matter to me.
I think, I think we should go ahead. If we wait another year, those vehicles are another year older, and it just doesn't make much sense to just sit on them.
Okay. We will go ahead and plan on another auction yet this year, and we will do all the proper requirements that we have to do and send it out to all the department heads to make sure that there isn't anything else, so we will be doing another online one yet this year, so. That sounds good. And we have one distress warrant for a mobile home that we will, the sheriff's office will be selling tomorrow. So, out of the hundred and some distress warrants, we've gotten paid for everything, or they've been declared uncollectible, but there's one that's going to be sold tomorrow, so just giving you an update on that. And otherwise, it's been business as usual.
Vicki, those properties we were talking about, maybe surplus, and where are we at with those?
With the properties for...
You had a list of some property, like in Bruce, Aurora.
Yes, and we have two properties that the county is taking tax deed for. And that isn't the surplus ones that are in the county's name, but the county is taking tax deed for those probably in the next week or two. I'm working with Brittany on that. And I'm hoping we can do that. There's the one lot in Bruce. Hopefully, we can do that at the same time and sell that.
Okay.
So, we're working on it, but we haven't gotten to the point of...
Those will be public?
They'll be public sales, yes. Yeah. They won't be included in the online sale.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
No comment.
We do have more later on, but I'm just going to touch on a few other things for my report. The overlay project on Highway Five is complete. We'll be doing reshaping the driveways and approaches and radiuses and stuff before it is completed, but that'll be our crew doing that. Bridge north of Bruce are pretty well complete, and they're supposed to start the dirt work and getting ready to pave this week. We had an unfortunate breakdown with one of our blades. The rear end went out. And to give you an idea of how expensive it can be, it will be in the neighborhood of twenty-five to twenty-nine thousand dollars by the time we get it back. Also working, putting together the paper trail to get our truck ready to purchase and the plow box, sander and wing, and that'll pretty much complete the capital asset purchases for two thousand and seventeen. We've been helping Moody County with some of their patching, sending a couple trucks and drivers down there so that we can get ready to chip seal early in August. And we've also been taking traffic counts on our bridge grant applications so that we can have an accurate current thing instead of, count instead of using the DOT's information that they provide. Another thing I'd like to mention, if any of the people in the audience are here to visit about the five-year plan later on in today's meeting, they're welcome to do so, but if we could get them to sign just an attendance sheet so we know who are here, it would help, and we'll send that along with our applications when, when we send those in. I know formally, we're going to do it the next week, but just in case there was some confusion or whatever, they're more than welcome to, to sign it. Another thing, in the road of hard knocks, Lake County just passed a ninety percent, ninety cent per thousand tax increase for road and bridge construction. It just passed last week, so they haven't heard a lot of ramifications yet, but it's interesting to find out that they would do that. Just information for you. Other than that, I think the rest will be coming up later in the meeting, so unless you have some questions on the current things. Mr. Pierce?
What type of tax was that?
It's, it's strictly used for road and bridge construction, and it can only be based on, like, your total taxation value. Maybe Vicki would know closer, but if it's over a certain billion dollar in valuation and below like two million, billion dollar valuation, they can set up a tax from like sixty cents up to a dollar twenty-five or something like that. But theirs was just for ninety cents, which is not small, but it's what they did. I think they anticipate it'll generate one point two five million dollars a year, so... Right.
Marty, you have nothing then? Okay. Moving on, scheduled agenda items. Regular business. Action to approve resolution number seventeen dash two six. A resolution to continue support for the First District Association of Local Governments during fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B. Action to approve resolution number seventeen dash two seven. A bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications. Structure number O-six dash two eight zero dash one one six.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C. Action to approve resolution number seventeen dash two eight. A bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications. Structure number O-six dash two four zero one four one.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash four six. A state of South Dakota financial and maintenance agreement between the Department of Transportation in Brookings County, South Dakota regarding the rumble strip payment marking project identified as roadway safety improvement project number PH zero zero one zero parentheses one four six. PCN number zero five W one. We have a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Background here. Dick, could you?
Yeah. This was in the process for up to two years ago, and the state had safety funds available, and the best candidate we had that would be for this was at North Seventy-seven that just got redone, and then south on twenty-four going over towards the interstate. So, it's, it's a hundred percent paid for. We don't have any contribution other than that, that we're in agreement that we want the state to proceed, so that's what this is.
And clarify, this is rumble strips on the shoulders, correct? Mr. Pierce?
Has, do we know what the maintenance of that will add to the, your budget?
Basically, none. It'll just, there'll be those little things on the edge of the pavement outside of the fog line.
So, in item number four, where we take responsibility for maintaining them after the state puts them in?
Yes.
You're not expecting that to be a budget issue?
No, no.
Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash four seven. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash four eight. An application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G. Update and discussion on jail expansion committee meeting. I guess with the, do you like to start?
Okay, we had a jail expansion committee meeting on July sixth, and at that time, we looked at four onsite options, the first being our original with a zero setback. The second was the amended option that came out of the variance hearing. And the third was moving west further within the twenty-five foot setback. And the fourth was a vertical option within the twenty-five foot setback. In addition, we're looking at locations away from the current facility, and in doing so, we're working on the figures regarding the budget increase for both the sheriff's budget and the jail budget. Those are two separate budgets, and we know that there'll be significant costs there, so we're gathering the numbers. We're also looking at the increase to the state's attorney's budget for travel and time that they'll, they'll have to spend traveling back and forth. We'll have increased building maintenance and remodel because we will have to use, continue using the current facility as a holding facility while the individuals go to court. So, and we know that that has to be remodeled because the plumbing is bad in there. We have a lead, meeting later this month where we'll talk about our findings, and then following that, we will hold a town hall meeting to inform the public of our findings. And once all of that is done, we'll come back in front of the entire board to decide how to proceed.
Stephanie summed that up pretty good. Architect awful reviewed the process of sending the plan to the historic preservation review. We went through those, basically just what our steps need to be. We did not receive a drawing of what it would look like. They're going to bring at the next meeting a, basically a drawing of two of the options. I believe the, with the, with the recommended variance.
One option.
One option of that, and it wasn't there going to be an option?
Well, I asked for a second rendering, but we've not heard back from them.
Right.
For sure, we'll get one.
It was a little, we weren't, we thought we were going to the meeting the other day, and we would receive this drawing. Intentions were, a week ago Friday, that Bart was receiving that, or at our meeting. We basically went through our options and what Stephanie had just said. Moving forward, off-site locations, we don't, I guess, Mike, you brought forward, how deep into these off-site locations do we want to go? Do we want to get into soil sampling? Do we want to get, there's different, they're, they're going to give us an estimate of land costs and stuff, but basically, how much money do we want to spend towards, do we want to get geotech involved and explore these sites that far?
I guess my initial thought would be until you've selected an off-site as a possibility, as an option. At that point, you may want to go farther, but to do it on every site that you consider is not cost-effective, obviously. So, I would look at all the other factors first, narrow it down, if you can, narrow it down to one off-site location that would possibly work, and then if we need to do the soil sampling and the other additional work at that time, we could certainly look at that, but I wouldn't do it on every off-site that everybody suggests.
And that's what, that's kind of what the architect was looking for an answer on.
Yeah.
You know, and we kind of indicated we don't want to start, we're only exploring the whole county for soil types and stuff.
Yeah, I think that would be cost prohibitive.
And the other thing that we need to keep in mind is, infrastructure for a jail is not the same as infrastructure for a home. The water has, the, the pipes have to be larger. The sewer has to be set up differently. And so, we, we really have to dive into that, but there again, until we would narrow down an off-site site, it's difficult to get a figure, so it's going to take us a little bit of time to do this.
Any other questions regarding our, hearing none. It's kind of brief, but that's what we went through. We're looking at, at our options, I guess, and like, like Stephanie said, once we, we'll have another meeting, we'll have a public meeting again, and then we'll, I'd like to come back to the board and see how we want to proceed, if we're going back to a board of adjustment again, or how, what we're going to actually do. So, we'll bring, we'll bring that to the board, so...
I've had a couple people ask me who's all on the committee. Maybe you could brief us of who the committee members are so the people understand it's not just you two.
It's Marty Kloster, who lives in the neighborhood, John Mills, Bart, Scott Sebring, Marty, Abby.
Judge Giles.
Judge Giles.
Stacy.
And us, Larry and myself.
I guess that, that proves that it's pretty broad-based, and obviously some experience in, in those areas that you need expertise in to plan this, and I think a lot of people thought it was just this group up here with you two leading it, and I just appreciate you exposing the committee members to everybody so they know who they are, and they can visit with any of the other members of the committee also if they feel necessary. Thank you.
Moving on, budget review. Mike? Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
Now I did. You made me... Letter H. Discussion on five-year highway, road and bridge plan. I just see if you were awake yet.
I think Linda had sent out to Stacy everything that possibly would help as far as generate questions from the board on the, on the five-year plan. We also separated it out so that you could see other county projects that are proposed versus just the projects that are proposed for the grant program. The maps that were included sometimes look a little bit confusing, but after you get the dates and the colors coordinated, it, it follows a pattern. And with the chip sealing and the overlay, we coordinate all that also to include our culvert replacement and upgrades that are done the year prior, so that we're never disturbing the road once it's done and overlaid. I guess the biggest question would be, is this something we can follow to a T? We can, as long as we don't have any unforeseen damage or breakups that, that we just have to address sooner than, than waiting till the scheduled year to do it. We also, with our patching that we hire out and contract to do, that follows in progression so that not only do we get a, the roads in shape, so when we finally chip seal them, it also gives us better life out of the overall roads. And, and the last few years, we have not had any unforeseen damage that needed special attention. If you look at our revenue sources, that's pretty much the same numbers that we went through at budget time. Basically, we were talking about the year two thousand and eighteen, and as you can see, when we get down into state funds, those are ones that we can, will be dealing with because they were already awarded or they were planned on going forward. The other items on the project list... The other items on the project list, the annual update, that's another thing we submit to the state. But I think it's a very good summary that, that kind of shows you what we've actually applied for. It gives you a description, the year that that'll take place, and then the status. And, and another thing that I think's so important about this is as we go further down, like, like let's say this year, we get awarded our grant for the bridge south on 77, the other half of, of the one. That will put us at our $4 million ceiling. So then we might have a year of, a little bit of idle time, so to speak, because we won't be eligible. But I guess it's my intent to follow through and, and try to apply for every possible revenue source we can. The other thing, if you notice in our projects for 2018, under the five-year program project listing, the bridge that, that really has all of us concerned, that 147-200 on Highway 12, the Sinai Road. If you remember, we've already started the process to get that shovel-ready. And, and so that's why you can see the local funding under that is, is significant. Now, basically, what we'll be eligible to do once we get to that point is apply for a shovel-ready reconstruction grant. If that does not go through, then the board will have a difficult decision. Are we gonna put the status on deferred? Or are we gonna fund it ourselves? But that won't take place till you, next year, when we do the 2019 budget, or whether you want to supplement 2018's budget. But just so you're aware, that everything is moving as quickly as possible. And if possible, as soon as we're eligible, we will take advantage of that or let you know. Here it is. Do you want to move forward on your own? Or do you want to apply for the grant when necessary? Or when we're able? So I think everything's kind of falling into place. Another thing that we keep record of, that we're required to keep record of, on our fixed asset report for the state, it will tell exactly what bridges we have done, what projects, as far as bridges have been done since, we go back to 2004. It's kind of interesting to just, once you learn where those, on the, on the third map that I included with your paperwork where it shows all the bridges and structures in Brookings County, once you become familiar with those numbers, then I think looking back at your asset report, it will show you the ones we've addressed over time and the ones we've got yet to do. So, with that, that's kind of a quick summary of what describes, was in your packet. I, I guess I'd like to open it up to questions. And, and if I can sort through my stuff, I should be able to give you an answer.
I, I have a question. After we've reached our $4 million cap, how long do we have to sit out? Just a year?
Just as long as we have not taken advantage of $4 million in three years. So, once we move into the next year, one will drop off. So, it's a three-year window.
Okay.
Yes.
Qualifying then?
Yes. What, one, once they drop off, they're gone. And so that goes back to, in a three-year window of time, we'll have $4 million.
Here's what I, I guess I was just kind of projecting out a little bit. Say, we're gonna try to get that second bridge shovel-ready. So we're gonna have a pretty good shot at getting that, which is gonna reach our max for 2018 or 19?
For 18.
18.
Yep.
Okay, so that's next year. But the project, the bridge won't be done until 19, correct?
Correct.
That's when we're budgeting processes.
Yes.
Okay, so, my concern is, is there's gonna be a gap. There is gonna be a year there where we're not gonna be eligible for anything because of that. Or if it is, it's very small. Because our first year with this program, we received three preliminary engineering grants, I think, wasn't it?
Right.
For like $100,000.
Yes.
So that's, that's gonna drop off, but that's not gonna leave.
Exactly.
So it's, potentially, it could be two years.
Yes.
Waiting on that aspect of it. So, my thought is, we're working on that Sinai Road bridge, and we're probably gonna have to do it ourselves. Just realistically, you know, unless we don't get that second bridge on the, on the 77, for some reason, we may have to do that on our own. And then maybe that, the other bridge would qualify. But one way or another, we're probably gonna have to pay for a bridge on our own. That being said, though, it seems like these bridges take a two-year process, or two-and-a-half-year process. My next step would be, when we qualify, again, where we have some substantial money available to us, have we identified a bridge that we can get shovel-ready at that time?
Yes.
And that's gonna be a two-year, I mean, that, so that means we've done the ones on, on 77.
Right.
We've done the one on Sinai Road. What's the next one we're gonna go after?
The next one is the one right north of Bruce on Highway 7. It's a river bridge. We've already did the preliminary engineering on it. We've already had the TSNL. It would be the, well, the 120-053 is the number of the bridge. It's a third one down. We were awarded the preliminary in 2016. The TSNL is done, and now it's just on hold until we can take advantage. But that's the next one that needs to follow through to put in for a grant.
Okay. So, should we, I guess my question then is, should we be looking at investing in that bridge to make sure that we get our score as high as possible by doing the preliminary and getting that shovel-ready? And, and my thought is, it seems like if we can get the shovel-ready, we have a pretty good shot at getting the bridge. But we're gonna have to invest, you know, $200,000, $300,000.
Exactly.
The bridge prior to that process.
Right.
Okay.
Usually, if, if I remember the discussion correctly, it's advantageous for our sake, for the point award, to have it shovel-ready versus contributing ahead of time or whatever, because then we can only get one point for every 5%. So, it, it really helps that way. So yes, you're right, Ryan. When, when we get to that point, especially in the budget process, we want to make sure that we set money aside, if that's our wish, to go for shovel-ready on any structure, to invest ahead of time. And, and it will be very advantageous to have it ready. And especially on these, this one, because we've already got the big preliminary part done, which is the least amount of money. But yet, it's one hurdle we don't have to cross.
I thought our intentions, when we were talking budgets for 2018, the, the bridge on the Sinai Road, number 12, I thought we were looking at budgeting to do that on our own. And we instructed Dick to move forward with all the engineering that we could get done as soon as possible. You know, we haven't finalized budget, but I mean, that was our intentions.
And, all right, not to interrupt Larry, but also, remember, a meeting or so ago, you approved the agreement to have Banner go ahead and do the design and build on that so that we, it, it's moving as fast as we can. And that should be done by the first of the year, so.
But I guess, my thought is this, is we're, we're kind of banking on getting that other bridge on 77.
Right.
And if we don't next year, then we should try to get this other bridge on Sinai.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we, if we, that means we've been paying for two of them. And that's gonna be, that's two, $2 million bridges or a million and a half dollar bridges there that we're not getting any help on. So, you know, if we don't get that second one for 77, we gotta try to get the one on Sinai.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. If, if we get the one on 77, we move forward with the one on, but we gotta look at the bid dates, too. When would we find out? I mean, we're not gonna find out till April.
Right, hopefully by the mid, to end of March.
Right.
Yeah, they got awarded by April 1st, I think it is.
And that's kind of a bad time to go to bid. I mean, it'd be great to go to bid on the Sinai Road at 1st of January.
Can we bid?
That's what I was, next.
Can we bid it? And then, if we don't get it and we decide to hold off on it because we're gonna finish up something else, can we cancel the project?
It, it won't make your contractors very happy, but yes, you can.
I was just gonna say, we may not get a favorable bid the next time. We need them to bid.
It doesn't fit in the time frame anyway. But that's what I mean, our intentions were. But I understand what Ryan's saying. If, if the second river bridge south on 77 doesn't get approved, we possibly have to do that ourselves, too. I mean, I understand that.
The, the other thing that would be extremely important, that we collaborate and decide if we're gonna move ahead with one bridge or the other on our own, that, that will affect, unless we use reserve funds, it'll, it'll, you know, in February is when I put together my specs and my projects for supplies and materials. So, by then, it would be nice to know if you're willing to switch to bridge from road. So that's just something to keep in the back of our minds, too.
I mean, I'm anticipating we're gonna have to use reserves to do these bridges. There's not, I mean, we can't expect to absorb a million dollars into a budget without, we'd, we'd use reserves, in my opinion. You know, because we have some reserves available for that.
All right. Ms. Pierce?
Do you have a copy of the 2017 five-year plan with you?
Yes.
Could, could you just run through where we're at on each of the things that are listed on there? Because some of the things.
Oh, on 2017?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which things we got done that we said we were going to do? I, I'd just like to have a little bit better handle on that.
Okay.
Some of them show up on the 18 list and some of them don't, and.
Okay, on the preservation for the bridge.
Can we do them in the order that's on the list and I'll follow along?
Oh, I don't have a, I, I don't have a copy of that, but I can give you.
Stacy, can you put that on the screen?
You got one up there?
And while she's pulling that up, Dick, would you, again, we have how many bridges?
220.
I'd just like you to say that number on there.
But only 160 or 148 of those are over 20 feet.
148?
Yeah.
I'd just like you to say that number so the people that are listening to our meeting understand we have a lot of bridges.
Okay. On, for the 2017, and I, I think those were, let me make sure. If you, if you look at your status sheet, the annual update, project list, Lynn, that kind of tells some of it for 2017 that have been done?
I tried to cross-reference and they don't. And, and I will commend you on the 18 one. Everything has the number of the structure on it, and that helps when you're trying to cross-reference. But we can't do that because we don't have them for all of the ones on 17.
Okay. Um, go back then and I'll explain for her which.
Right. So, did we get the preliminary engineering done on that bridge?
Correct.
And that one we're set for major construction on, right?
That's, yeah, that's the one that is the one we're just talking about. We did the preliminary. We also authorized Banner to do the design and build. And so, when that is done, we will have the opportunity, if it presents itself, to either apply for a grant and be shovel-ready, or we can tell Banner, we want to go to bid in 30 days, and they'll put the stuff together so that we could go to bid and bid it ourselves. So, that's for that one. The next one, the preliminary engineering, is the one right north of. Where she would have put the description there.
Down north of Bushna?
Yeah.
141 is the one we did the preliminary engineering.
And we've got it in 2018 for a preliminary grant.
Right, that's because it's on, that we've applied for and we got. And those are the, those are, this year, that's all we were awarded, was the three preliminary engineering ones for 2017. So they're all getting done. And then the preservation, next, is that bridge that we're already planning on doing the epoxy coating.
Are you talking about 116? Which number are you talking about?
The 150-219. No, the preliminary engineering ones, those are, those were all awarded. And then the preservation ones, remember the one that we've had in the works for, since day one? That's already been bid, and I gotta get in touch with them. I wanted to do it prior to this meeting, but to see what their plans are. It's a company out of Rapid City that won that bid. So that'll get done in, in this summer.
And that's why that's not then on the 2018 sheet.
Correct.
It's gonna be bid and it'll be done in 2017.
Right.
And can, I can't remember this, the $4 million cap that we have, does that include preservation grants?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And so, as far as the rest of those projects, the seal coating, we will start in August. The overlay is done.
What about 050 and 190? Are those on the bid for being done in 2017, then?
Well, yeah, those are.
All three of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I don't think the two, though, 219 and 050, I don't think they've been bid yet, but they were awarded. But the other one has been awarded and bid and everything. That should be done for sure. And hopefully, the others will, too. The biggest delay with the first one was the state couldn't decide what would be allowed and what wouldn't, and how the, the process of bidding and all that stuff would be done.
So we received all three of these preservation grants?
Yes. Except the first one. I thought the first one was from, no, that isn't right. We, we got all three, and we got three of the preliminary engineering ones. I'll have to look back, I'm sorry, I.
And they're not bid yet?
No, they are not bid yet.
So, will we still have time to get those done in 2017?
We hope so. We hope so, yeah. And that's all done through the state, though, so I don't really have control over that, other than to call and ask them what.
And then 238?
238. And, and those two working together, I think, again, I hate to sound like we have in the past, but hopefully, that falls through. Because they've already did the borings and the state. We hired the state to do that. The historical's all done, the environmental's pretty much passed. So it looks good that we'll be ready to go with that one. But we'll cross our fingers.
And then when we get, I, the last two five-year plans that we've had, we had our milling overlay on and our seal coating. And I note that that's not on the 2018 plan. Is there, is there a reason for that? State change what they want done, or?
I think she put it in there.
Am I missing it?
The, under other projects, on, on this one? Yeah, on, on the right, where it's other county projects.
Okay, but, but we're not listing it on here any longer? I don't think it's on this chart.
No, not on the, not on the bridge one. Because when we contacted the state, they were not interested in anything other than what was grant-related.
Okay.
So, that was the reason for that. But the other part is for your information to know that.
But that's why it's not on the, on the plan? Because they said not to put it on there? And did they not want then, we had talked previously about putting our under 20-foot structures on there, what we're intending on doing? But they don't want that on there either because that is a.
Only grant-eligible projects.
All right. That answered my questions, thank you.
Any other questions, or no?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to letter I. Budget review. Uh, Mike?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, my budget's pretty much the same as it was last year. I did two changes, uh, did do, uh, or three changes, I should say. I, um, did lower the prescriptions. Seems like our prescriptions are, are down. That one year, last year's was, or I'm sorry, the year before was exceptionally high, so I, I think we'll be okay on that, uh, bringing it back down to the one thousand. And it does seem like our, our rents seem to keep going up and I've asked for an increase of five thousand on that. Uh, last year it was up, the last two years it was more than, than we had it budgeted and I don't really see a lot of change in that. I'm hoping that the Salvation Army and, and my neighbor program can pick up a little bit more or the United Way, but, uh, just in case, I have asked for increases in that. And then as far as like the, uh, inpatient, I know that, uh, I've asked for quite a bit more than what we've actually spent. And I probably see next year, it's not going to probably be as high because, um, the ACA is still in effect for this year and that's the same reason our prescriptions costs are down because there are more people that fall in that group that are getting, healthcare than bef, or health insurance than before. And the other area that I've asked for an increase is funerals. And, uh, for a long time, we were only having about five, uh, three to five funerals a year. And that is, that is really kind of went up with, and, uh, I know if it's maybe it's population growth or what, but I have asked for an increase to cover approximately two more funerals a year, uh, than over last year. So it'd be about seven, that what I'll be looking at now. And, uh, I guess that's my poor relief. And as far as the, the VA, uh, budget, I have asked for the same amounts and I know I don't always use all the travel, but part of it is, is that we have a week-long school in Pierre. And I do have housing there, so I usually don't put in for it, but, uh, once, uh, I'm no longer in this position, then somebody, uh, will be having to ask for it. And that's most of the reason that I've left it in there.
Okay, any questions, Mike?
Um, real briefly on the other report is, uh, we have had quite a few more veterans stopping in to see us, which is a good thing. Uh, they don't add to our budget, but uh, I'll probably bring a report of how much we've increased as far as the money coming into the county, uh, from the, from the VA side of things. And I'll bring that to you next commission meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the OAC budget.
If I can bring, I'll bring up the budget document here. When we were bud, when we had had our initial discussions on the budget back about a month ago, we didn't know yet exactly what was going on with the OAC. So I think we, we put some money in there and I can't, did we put that in the building fund? So here, um, now that, you know, potentially we're moving forward with that, with that purchase, I think, and I don't know if you want to do it now or if you want to wait, but, um, I think there's maybe some, I don't, I don't think we accounted for any remodel costs. And we did not account for any increase in insurance with that facility. And both of those will be added expenses next year if that purchase is complete.
Have we heard anything on insurance from?
No, I haven't gotten anything back yet from, from safety benefit.
Okay.
Chairman. Stacy, did they do the outside inspection of the gun range and everything was okay with that or are they going to send us a report? We'll know.
That's what I say. We're waiting for that.
We haven't received that yet, but yes, they did that, um, that actually the day of our special meeting where we approved the purchase.
Yeah, I'm going to, uh, assume that we'll have some payroll expenses some sort in this with employees. Do we put that in this budget also?
I think for now you could probably account for that here. I, I think eventually you will want to have a separate budget for that facility. But I think for now you could account for it here within this budget.
We could always come up with some kind of an amendment if we need to.
Correct, yeah.
At the appropriate time. Yeah, because right now it's, we're not sure where we're at. So, okay, I agree.
If you want us to wait, you know, Vicki and I can wait to get more, when, when we get more information on the insurance, when we have a better idea of what that could, would look like. We have, um, the provisional budget doesn't have to, will be approved on September fifth. It's that Tuesday, I believe that's the date, the Tuesday after, uh, Labor Day, Monday. So we have a little bit of time here to wait. You know, we're, we're in good shape because we've got this, we've done, but, if you're going to look at using reserves to balance, continue to balance it, you can give us that direction and we can come up with estimates for you and move in that direction when we get some numbers. If, or if you're going to look at making cuts somewhere in order to balance the budget with these increased expend, expenditures, we'd have to look at that too.
Like, wait till, it'd be nice to have the numbers.
Just wait to get some more hard and firm numbers. And the other one, I know we had talked, um, when we discussed the technology budget, we had talked about changing the way we'd handle our, our internal internet, our email, pardon me, email. Um, there were a couple different, we had, we'd put one in and I, Sean could probably come out and remind us. He's, he's more knowledgeable about this than I, but we were looking at the hosted versus the cloud-based and, uh, you know, there, there are benefits to both. The cloud-based was more expensive. So, and we had it in for the hosted email, correct? The budget included, includes that at this time.
Yes, we had, uh, I had budgeted for the, basically, we, we have the server in our basement for our email. But, uh, Commissioner Bartley pointed out that another organization probably knows how to handle, well, an organization that specializes in email probably knows how to manage an email server better than, better than I do, um, which I don't disagree. But, uh, when we looked at the pricing of it, our, our break-even point price-wise was at about, um, three, three and a half years where, after which point the off-site, the hosted solution would end up being, be more expensive than purchasing it outright. So, um, the suggestion, suggestion I went with was to keep it onsite like we have and it was purely a, a financial consideration. It's, um, if we assume the server will last about five years, which is a safe assumption, we can usually get more use out of it than that, um, it would end up being ten to twenty thousand dollars more at five years to do the hosted solution rather than having it onsite. And that's what I was going to suggest unless, uh, you wanted to say, no, we definitely want to go with the cloud.
I like your purely financial reason.
That's what I assumed, but I figured if you, if you wanted to say, yes, let's go with the cloud, then we could go that way, but, yeah, I, at, at that cost, I, I can't see the value being worth it.
You are much better versed on this than any of us can even think about being, and I, I trust your opinion and.
Basically, what I wanted you to find out was exactly what you found out, so I'll, I'll take your recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so was, if, that was really all I had for review unless there was anything that any of you or if Vicki had come up with in the past several weeks that you would like to discuss?
I, I would like us to keep in the back of our mind the remodel at the OAC because I got questioned on that quite largely last night at a meeting. So, you know, that isn't something that we're going to be able to put off for a long period of time. So be thinking.
Okay, uh, no other?
Other? Dave?
Nope. Okay, Commission, Department Director report.
Regarding the OAC as well here in this interim time, um, if we did receive a letter from the banks saying that if the commission wants to inspect the premises to, you know, they would try to accommodate us as best, you know, as best they can for requests to go out to that facility. So we just need to let them know. Capital for a Day is coming up on the, it is the eighteenth, I believe. Is that next Tuesday, July eighteenth? There's a couple different events that the commission has been invited to for that. Uh, there is a community social at the Children's Museum starting at ten o'clock, uh, that morning. And then you have all been invited to the workforce development luncheon with Governor Dugard at the Swift Tel Center at noon, and I have RSVP'd for all of you to attend that. There, there is a city-county safety picnic on July twentieth. Uh, we'll be serving lunch out at Pioneer Park for city and county staff from eleven to one. If you plan to attend that, please let me know. I need to get a head count for, for food purposes. So if any of you do plan to attend, you can let me know that. Uh, in front of you, I did have a couple other handouts, um, inform, election information for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. That will come, that will take place, those elections take place in September at our Fall Convention. So if you are interested in that and have additional questions, let me know. I can do some more legwork on you with, you know, with you to find out what you need to know, or we can contact Chris out at the association. There's also a conservation district agenda that I, uh, put out on your desks this morning. That meeting is coming up tomorrow morning at eight fifteen at their office on two oh-five-sixth Street. Other than that, I just, a couple other things, uh, the, I mentioned the safety picnic. Also next Thursday, the twentieth, First District Association has their annual membership picnic, um, at six o'clock. That's up in Watertown at Memorial Park. So if you do plan to attend that, I think you probably need to RSVP for that as well. So if you would like me to do that for you, let me know. Or you can RSVP for yourself as well with, with Todd up at First District. Other than that, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
I'll be at the safety picnic.
Okay.
Plan on it. Another T-bone, I don't know.
A T-bone?
Yep.
I'll put that request in. I'm not sure if it'll be fulfilled or not, but.
Okay, moving on, Deputy State's Attorney's report.
Uh, Terry will be back tomorrow and then she leaves with, um, Chris and Jacob for the equalization appeal in Pierre. So they'll be out Thursday for that and then back. Uh, and I just wanted to report that, um, I was invited last week, uh, by some citizens to come speak at a group called Round Table Ales at Wooden Legs regarding the jail expansion last night. And so I reached out to the sheriff and Commissioners Miller and Jensen to join me, uh, just to provide input from the committee. And it was a great discussion, some great questions from the community members. I appreciated that they reached out to us and I think initially some of the questions were geared towards what, what the crime rates were, what the trending crime was in Brookings, and then eventually I think they uh, came to the conclusion that the need was clearly there and that was established. And then they just wanted to present some, some ideas or things that they wanted the committee to think about. And so I know those are things that we'll all take back to the committee as we continue to gather data and hope to get to a, a final decision on this project.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, Commissioner reports and discussion items. Leanne, would you start, please?
On, um, June twenty-eighth, uh, Terry and Richard and Bob and I met to work on, we were finishing up the natural resources section of the ordinance. We're still looking for, um, information on the bodies of water in Brookings County that are considered meandered. I used to say meandered lakes, but it does include rivers and streams and some sloughs and some other things, and we want to get that tacked down in the ordinance. And on the fourth of July, I walked in the, um, parade and walked with Spence Holly. And he talked about the fact that he thought game fish in parks might now have an official listing of those. And Bob's trying to track that down for us and to see because the state did not have one previously. But he thought maybe that changed based on what's going on with the, uh, legislation. So we're looking for that. Uh, the other thing that, um, Spence talked about and just wanted the commission to maybe have a heads-up is he thinks that there may be going to be some legislation coming up this spring to reestablish the county's, county's responsibility on the drainage issue, that the legislature's moving away from doing a, um, geographic area or a water basin type because it's not, not moving forward and that maybe we would want to, um, have some conversations with him regarding that and, and what we'd like to see. So that'll be coming up. And then, um, on the, on July sixth, I met with the, uh, Planning and Zoning Subcommittee on the Administrative Ordinance. We all met to talk about the issues that had come out of our Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, uh, amount of notice to be given. The notice issue is going to be difficult. The public would like to see us give more notice. Right now, we've got in the administrative ordinance, ten days. And that's what the state statute says, that we give ten days notice. Well, there are considerable number of people on the Planning and Zoning Committee that would like to see us give more notice. The problem that we've got is that our publication periods, you've got to balance the notice with how, uh, efficiently you can handle your public hearings. Because if you give additional time, then you can't meet because we have so many legal newspapers in the county that only publish once a week. It runs into a deadline problem and, and I think, um, we're probably going to go back to Planning and Zoning and say, stick with the ten days and, and we'll have a, an in-house policy of doing as much as we can for notice. But otherwise, you're going to be waiting, after somebody files an application, you might be waiting sixty days before they get a public hearing. So it's, it's balancing out those needs and we're still talking about that. But I think when that comes in front of this commission for approval, that you all are going to be hearing about that. And I just want to give you some opportunity to think about that and, and develop what your own philosophy is going to be on that. And then, um, last night I attended the Brookings Marketplace LLC open house here, which is interesting and, and if that all flows together, there may be some issues because that's pretty close to joint jurisdiction area when we start doing that development up north of, of Brookings in the industrial area. It's all going to be interesting to watch. That's going to take some time. We'll, we'll see how that flies. But that kind of ties into the last thing I wanted to talk about, which was the Joint Jurisdiction Committee proposal. And that came in front of you before, if you remember, and, and we were going to make a few, uh, cleanup changes to it. I did send a copy of that to Mayor Corbett to look at. He looked at it. I don't know if he talked to the rest of the council or not, but he sent me back an email that said, you know, he thought that it looked fine. And so I think that that's probably going to come up in front of this group on the twenty-fifth for approval and then we'll have to ask the city if they want to approve it. And then we'll be ready to form our Joint Jurisdiction Committee if that all looks, looks good to you all. I will not be here on the twenty-fifth. I'll attend by telephone, but. I'll attend by telephone, but we'll be at our annual vacation at the flying in Oshkosh. So I'll just appear telephonically from, from there for the meeting on the 25th. That's my report.
Mr. Bartley?
Short report, it was not a lot of activity for us since the last meeting. I did attend, however, the 4th of July celebration that the county provided some money for the fireworks and the, and the display. And I was told by an awful lot of people who were around there that it was one of the best they'd seen in a long time. So they thanked the county for that. So that concludes my report.
Mr. Grogman?
All right, again, not much. Was unable to attend the beta meeting. I needed to attend a funeral of a family member. Then July 29th, we had a Brookings Health meeting and things are going well. They're getting back on their timeline after the delay for the front part there. So you can see a lot of stuff is going on and, and they're moving, moving pretty good. They ended up, they have borrowed all their money now that we, that they needed to bond from and stuff. And so things are coming along fairly well there. They're excited and, and numbers were down last month, but this last month, or excuse me, two months ago, this last month, they've popped back up again. So numbers are looking good again for, for their numbers for the year so far. So that's about it from the Brookings Health meeting. And then that's about all I had.
On June 22nd, I attended the Novita ribbon cutting, which was very nice with the governor and first lady in attendance. So he helped cut the ribbon. On June, the county got thanked for our participation in the road project. On June 28th, I attended a JDC meeting in Sioux Falls. And they're not planning on building a building, which is good news. We don't have to worry about kicking in for that. There was a slight increase in our non-secure sheltering from 185, 52 a day to 186, 08. I think we can absorb that. That was pretty simple. The secured housing will be 220 a day. And they're looking at possibly, in light of the fact that there's no building project planned, probably doing a five-year agreement rather than a two-year. So that's good because that'll hold our fees level then for five years. And I, I have stats here on all the partner counties, if anybody wants to look at those. Then June 29th, we had a special commission meeting. July 6th, I was out of town for the 4th of July celebration, so I did not partake in those events. But on the 6th, we had a jail expansion meeting. We've already reported on that. And then last night, I was invited to go out to the 4H leaders' meeting. And we visited with Tom Richter and Scott about possibly moving for the Achievement Days activities out of the main arena because they have the big concert the next day and they don't want the smell and the flies. And so they proposed using the Blue Rink and the Holding Barn. And they did a map. And what ended, there was some discussion. It wasn't as heated as I thought it might be. So it wasn't terribly contentious. But the bottom line is the, the various species of livestock, the leaders for those groups are going to get together with Tom and Scott and decide how they want to set up Holding Barn and the, the Blue Rink to house and show the livestock out there. And then a change, which I think is, might be a really nice change this year, is that they will do the barbecue and the fashion review all out in the main arena. So everybody's sitting together and the fashion review will then have more participation, which I think is really nice. And I, I think that, I see that as a plus. And then, then they'll open up the big doors and funnel people over to watch the round robin, wherever that is, whether it's in the Blue Rink or the Holding Barn. So I, I think they were fairly receptive, but I think it's kind of a picture of things to come. And I think we better be thinking about getting a building built out there for our livestock. So anyway, and then the last thing is, I, when I got out of that, then I ran, ran over to Wooden Legs and I only got in on the tail end of that. But, so that's all I have.
I have a question if I could. When you went to the JDC meeting, how is the unsecured with Lutheran Social Services working with the juveniles? Are they happy with that programming and the move that they've made in the last year there?
I, yeah, it sounds like it. Nobody had any complaints.
Thanks.
And one other thing, after Tom and Scott left, then Sonia asked if they had any questions for Commissioner Miller while she was there. And so then they started on the OAC and I knew where that was going to go. But, but again, the first question was, are we moving with or without a remodel? And I said, at this point, it's without, but, you know, we, we are considering what we're going to have to do. And then the second question was, what do you, what are we, what can we take with us? And I said, well, I'm assuming we take everything that's not attached. It's ours. So that's kind of, they had some questions, but.
And those questions were from the 4H leaders or from our staff?
The leaders.
Leaders Association.
When did 4H expansion and promotion last meet?
I can't remember the exact date.
It, it just seems to me like there ought to be a meeting of that group to be looking at some of these issues we're doing with 4H out at the OAC and to, and maybe to, to talk about.
Well, I don't think they, I mean, how would they do that? They didn't even know if this was all going to happen.
But what I'm saying is now we, we do. And I'm, I'm wondering as we're moving forward with that project, it'd be nice to have their input. If they're supposed to be talking about 4H promotion and, and coming up with program ideas and stuff, is there something when we're looking at remodeling that, that they're interested in? It'd be nice to have input from that group is what I'm saying.
I don't foresee that happening right now because of Achievement Days and the State Fair, but I, I'm guessing right after they probably will put one together.
Great.
You're on that, right?
Right.
You could talk to her.
I'll talk to Sonia about it. Last one was a while ago, so. On the 22nd, attended the Novita grand opening. It was pretty impressive, all their individuals that work out there, the presentation that they did give and the governor being there. On the 29th, attended our special meeting on the OAC. After the, after the meeting, met out, met out at the OAC and Doug Kirkus with the Safety Benefits toured the facility. He was impressed that everything was, you know, it's, it's all up to code, built, built to code and everything. He said, there should be no structural problems ensuring that they would look into the risk involved with the shooting range. And they will, they will bring forward agreements and recommendations to use with the certain groups that will be using that. They will help us through that process. So I can't remember the gal's name, but she was, she was basically in charge of that, looking at agreements and recommendations to move forward with that. On, we had our jail expansion committee meeting on the 6th. Kind of talked about that earlier. Also, I, last night, I went to Wooden Legs with Abby at the jail expansion talk. It was good talk. There's a couple individuals that see the need. They didn't realize it before and Marty, Marty did a good job and Abby did a really good job of, you know, showing our needs and stuff. And so we did that. I did have a couple concerns, two of them that have already been addressed, I believe. There were some concerns around 34th Avenue, the thistles that were growing. But I drove it yesterday and all the thistles been mowed and, except in the fence line, it looks fine. Some of those weeds are actually on landowner's side, so that looked good. The mayor of Aurora talked to me about the speed limit. I believe he's talked to Dick and they're going to put it at the city limits. Yep, but I think they're going to move it to where the city limits is now, so. And also, I had a couple calls on, I don't know if Boz is going back to that bridge south of White and address the asphalt, the roughness of the ends of the bridge. But I think that can be handled also. Other than that, that's all I have. Mr. Miller?
One thing that we found out when we did that inspection of OAC, I was under the impression that the curtain was there. No. Randy said it's not.
That wasn't.
We were showed something that we were told was the curtain.
No, that's the, that's the rubber.
Okay.
That's not the curtain.
Where is the curtain?
It never was purchased.
Okay.
That is going to be an immediate need.
And there's opt, we talked to Randy about that. There's other options besides a curtain. There's different types of walls, movable. It was one of the, we did note that, so. And we'll also have some additional costs with updating the fire extinguishers and the exit signs and such, which haven't been done for a while, so. But that was a couple things we did find. And I'm sure, I'm sure that Mr. Kirkus will come with recommendations on, he probably had some other issues, but, so. That's all, moving on. Number 12, executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, presidency for contract negotiations.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Most who cared?